I'm glad you're here for this. So here's the forum format, okay? Each person will have a two-minute opening statement, up to two minutes. You're welcome to be shorter than that. And we'll give everybody a chance for an opening statement of two minutes. The responses to questions are one minute, and then two-minute closing statements. So I think with that, if you are patient, if we interrupt you, and I believe we have a timekeeper right in front who will sort and warn you as if the professor knows it's easy to start talking and go. And so I will get your attention, and they didn't nail me down here, so I may have to walk over and tap you or something if it goes on too long, right? So that everybody has to wait the equal amount of time, okay? So let's first, I think, begin with Nancy Merrill, who happens to be her first sitting right here. And you have two minutes for your opening statement.
Thank you so much. And thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. This is an important thing for us to do, is to be able to vote and to know who we're voting for. I'm Nancy Merrill. I'm running for Eagle City Council. You might recognize my name if you've ever been down to the Merrill Park at Eagle. There are some certain things that I want to tell you that I stand for and that are part of my platform that I'll explain a little bit later. Number one, public health and safety. We have to have a safe community. We have to have great officers at fire and police to take care of our community, to make sure we're safe if we're going to have a community at all. Number two, we need good leadership. I have tons of leadership, decades of leadership. I served on planning and zoning city council as mayor, Idaho State Parks Director, and many numerous committees and positions throughout my life, basically. Excuse me. I believe in protecting the values that are important to Eagle. One of the things is civility and respect, learning to get along with one another, and to build on the community that we have. And the fourth thing is growth and transportation. And we'll talk about that a little bit later, but we've got to have managed growth. We've got to be put in the right places at the right time and do the right things for Eagle. Thank you.
Next, we have Mr. Gillis.
Robert Gillis. I am a little bit of a curveball in the race. I always call myself that, but just to introduce you to me. My wife is standing in the back. She's my biggest supporter in this run, otherwise I wouldn't have done it. I'm big into family. I have my daughter here also that's been along the campaign trail, and my mom, who lives locally and is a senior in this area. What I bring to the table is I was a peace officer in LA County for 25 years. Prior to that, I worked for an ambulance company for five and a half years. Prior to that, I was a police cadet for five and a half years. My whole life has been in public service. I was injured at work and retired here almost six years ago. My kids all attend schools here locally. My son is currently a member of Turning Point USA at Boise State. My daughter also attends Boise State, and I have a young daughter who's at Eagle High School. My concerns about this valley, or the traffic, the growth, everything that we all see that impact us on a daily basis, fiscal management of the city as we grow, supporting our law enforcement and our fire folks. I'm concerned about the senior center. Obviously, with my mom being a part of the senior center, it's important to me. I'm worried about issues of traffic on Old State Street, the businesses that are on Old State Street, and I think we need to get that up and thriving again. We need to support those businesses. It's a huge issue for me personally. I want to get that up and running. I'm looking forward to Heritage Park getting up and running and the city coming back to life. So I'll speak more at the end in closing, but just kind of give you a little bit of who I am, whatever, to the table. And as far as my work history, I'm a problem solver with going into people's homes and dealing with issues that arise during my patrol duties. I listen to people. You haven't had listening. You've got to work with people. And I'll add more as we go with our answers, but that's all I've got for now.
Okay. Next, we have Danielle Davis.
Yep. And I'm going to apologize ahead of time. I am still working full-time and I am not off-script, so my opening and closing statements are, I'm going to need the help of my phone, but my questions in between will be totally me, no editing, no anything. So I'm Danielle Davis, and I'm running for Eagle City Council to be a problem solver, focused on smart growth, fiscal responsibility, transparency, and protecting what makes our city special. I'm proud to run as an independent because Eagle doesn't need more partisanship. We need collaboration and common sense. I'm not here to give you soundbites or slogans. I'm here for an honest conversation about how we move Eagle forward. I'm not a politician, as you can tell. I'm your neighbor. I've lived in Eagle for over a decade and face the same challenges you have: traffic, rapid growth, and frustration with how our city is being managed. My background is in finance and education, and I know how to analyze complex issues, find solutions, and then communicate them clearly. I've also learned that democracy works best when people talk with each other rather not at each other. I don't promise to have all the answers tonight, but I do have the commitment to do the work, ask the hard questions, and make decisions based on facts, not ego or politics. My goal is to govern with you, not over you. And Eagle belongs to all of us, and together we can protect what makes it special while planning responsibly for the future. Tonight, I'm here to listen because your voice should help guide the decisions that shape our city.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Steve Bender.
Good evening, Dr. Witt. Thank you for moderating. Thank you all for being here tonight. My name is Steve Bender. I'm a candidate for Eagle City Council. I have been involved in political stuff for a very long time. In college, I interned for Jim McClure. Soon as I graduated, they hired me back. After being on his staff for six years, Reagan appointed me to the Pentagon Legislative Affairs Office. Then I got into defense contracting when I retired. I grew up with my uncle, who was Director of Law Enforcement for Idaho, telling me about the state, McClure's staff telling him about the state. And 12 years ago, my daughter moved here to teach middle school math. So it was really a no-brainer for my wife and I as to where we were going to go when we retired. We chose the best state in the Union, and after a little cajoling with her, I convinced her that Ada County was the best place to go in Idaho, and then Eagle is the crown jewel of the Treasure Valley. I am proud to be an Eagle resident. I have been on the sewer board for the last two years, where I did a lot of work with our 20-year plans for collection and treatment. I was on the citizen committee that looked at the comprehensive plan three years ago, and in the next two years, we need to update that. I'm looking forward to being an integral part of the team that reviews that plan and puts out our next amendment to our comp plan. That comp plan and our zoning ordinances is what controls our growth. That's the number-one issue for voters, from what I've been hearing, and we have to do it in a way that's both smart and right and compliant with Idaho law. And we will be doing that if I'm on the council. Thank you.
Okay. Our next candidate is Ms. Amy.
Hi. Good evening, everyone, and thank you all for coming. I love seeing so many people that are interested in what the candidates have to say because local politics really is what affects us in our neighborhoods. And I am a nurse practitioner. I've been a nurse practitioner for about 30 years or so, and I have a heart of service. That's why I chose to run. But I was also encouraged by others to run, even though I've been here a short amount of time. I've only been here a year permanently, or just over a year. But since 2020, my husband and I were going back and forth, looking at property and staying here, and we noticed huge changes just in those few years. And so I thought, oh, my gosh. You know, at the time, I was serving as mayor of Yorba Linda, which is the most conservative city in California. And so as I was seeing these changes, I thought, I better, if we're moving to Eagle, I better start learning more and more about the city. So I started learning about the city, and in 2021, we bought property here and then built our home and then ended up moving here in 2024. But I was also on the council for eight years, and so I was, I'm very familiar what city documents look like, what the comp plan is, what the capital improvement plan is, and I also look forward, like Steve was saying, to be involved in pushing that forward, but not just by council, with all of the residents. You have to listen to the residents, and that, you don't have to live here forever to be able to listen to residents. And so that's very important to me: transparency, accountability, and accessibility, for sure. And then there's all kinds of other things that I'm sure we'll talk about later, but I'm also an adjunct professor at BSU, at the School of Nursing. I developed the doctoral leadership program for the graduate nursing students, and then I teach at USC. I'm one of the conservative professors. Thank you.
And last but not least, Tom Letts.
Hello, everybody. I'm Tom. I have been a resident of Eagle for 26 years. Professionally, I am a commercial driver, have been since I got out of high school. Worked for LA Unified for 15 years, driving kids to and from school. Glad I'm not doing that anymore. My concern is for the direction and the future of the city. Watching what's been going on in the council, we've been attending them for a number of years now. We are on a direction where we're spending ourselves way beyond our means. Fiscally, we are not being responsible. We cannot continue to just depend on new housing and expect our economic growth to sustain us as far as housing is concerned. We do need to start looking into some commercial businesses coming in here, other than just small boutique shops. And it's one of the reasons why I'm here, is to start bringing this out here and letting people know. Going from a $25 million budget to a $68 million budget is nowhere near being fiscally conservative. We need to make some changes, and we need to do it now. Thank you.
I'm now supposed to start with our questions, and I'm going to give, I'm going to start with Mr. Gillis here, and we'll work our way down the table with Ms. Merrill. Okay. If you're elected, four years from now, what does the city of Eagle look like, and how do you hope it gets there?
In four years from now, the city of Eagle is going to look like we've been working hard on being conscientious about the growth. I think that we need to manage our growth, make it responsible. I think that we need to be a cohesive team in the council. I think people are going to see a solid working team if I'm part of the council. I think that the citizens are going to feel like they are heard in four years from now. They're going to feel like their representatives are adequately representing them, and that the council has been listening to them. And I think that overall, the city environment is going to be very positive in four years from now. That's what I got for now.
Great. Thank you. Next up is Ms. Davis, and I forgot to say before you started, one minute for these responses.
Okay. And can you repeat the question again?
No. If you are elected, four years from now, what does the city of Eagle look like, and how do you hope it gets there?
Okay. The city would look like, basically, I want to say at first that the people who are sitting, trying to be elected right now, have to deal with what's left to them from their predecessors. So they are not in charge fully of what it would look like in four years. I would hope that they would carry out the plans effectively that have already been approved, and that projects would be completed, that they wouldn't be left hanging halfway done, and that there would be more cohesion on the city board between the mayor and the council members, not so much infighting. That's how I would help.
Okay. Mr. Bender.
As we've learned over the last four years, a lot can change in four years in this town. Many of the projects that are currently constructing or are still waiting in the wings were approved years ago. So this council doesn't have the power, regardless of which of the seven of us are sitting on the council, to go back and undo a lot of that past decision maybe. All we can do is make sure that, moving forward, our answers to future applicants are, these are our rules, this is our comp plan, these are our zoning ordinances. We're going to require you to follow the plan that we put in place for the city of Eagle. I can tell you that I will not be supporting without very good justification a laundry list of variances for applicants coming in with future projects. We need to be smart and control our growth in a way that's conforming with what the citizens of Eagle want. And that's where we're going to see the biggest change in the next four years, is in our population.
Ms. Amy. Dr. Witt.
Thank you. Thank you. I think that Eagle will look a lot like what the comp plan is saying it's going to look like. Not that that's hard and fast rules, but it is a guide of what is going to be happening in the city, and it's available on the city website. Anyone can look at it. But my biggest thing is to make sure that the developers and all of the projects that are already started, that we have the funding for those projects, but that we are sticking with the contract and making sure that the developers are staying within the contract and not having a bunch of different changes. So I'm hoping that Eagle looks a lot like it does today. The other thing, too, is as far as sitting on council, no matter who gets on, I want to increase the transparency and make sure that everyone knows what's happening before it's decided. I don't like the 24-hour or 48-hour notice, and then suddenly the residents are dealt this hand. So I want to make sure that we all have more communication and transparency, for sure.
Okay. Mr. Letts. How would you, where do you want to see the city of Eagle in four years?
Communication is the key, and one of the problems that we have been having is people are not getting the information. They do have a website, but nobody really knows how to use it, apparently, and everything gets left to the last minute. Even some of the meetings that are going on, or like the one that was this Tuesday, or tonight, people don't know that there's a forum going on. Why this is happening? No? Because we're depending on model communication, but model communication isn't apparently working all that well. A newspaper would be nice. I'm going to do it. I'm out next door. I'm making sure that everybody knows what's going on as best as I possibly can. I'm hoping that I'm going to be the guy that's going to open up the city and have more participation of the people so that everybody has a voice in what's going on here.
And you are the final...
Wind it up.
...Mr. Merrill. Eagle in four years.
Eagle in four years. I hope that when, Eagle in four years, that we can turn the corner and correct some of the things that have happened in the city that have made me want to run like this. Our signs will be back where they belong, number one, and back down on the grounds instead of reaching the sky. We will have more comments at our Eagle City Council meetings. We will have our pre-council, where we have our reports, and less time for staff, but more time for the public. We will have more of our parks and recreation, and we'll have more pathways. Built five of them during my tenure, and I think that I'm innovative and creative in finding money and land to do those things. I hope we have more of those opportunities for people within our community.
Okay. Now, let's move to a question about, and this question will begin with Ms. Davis. What is your approach to the city budgeting process and property taxes?
Okay. My approach to the budget with property taxes, our property taxes are allocated by the county based on the ask from the council, this is my understanding, and the fair market value of all the property that is in the city. So I'm sorry. So my approach would be to lower taxes by encouraging higher aftermarket-value properties to be in Eagle, and also spending within our budget and not overspending, examining each line item to make sure that it's not inflated just for good results at the end, to say, we beat the budget number. I want them to be accurate numbers, and I want the money, the funds to be allocated appropriately to where they need to be.
Mr. Bender.
I'll let Suzanne get reset. You ready?
Reset.
I have been working with budgets for the last nearly 40 years as HOA president and treasurer, condo treasurer, nonprofit treasurer, and I'm really good at looking at budgets. It kind of stunned me to realize that in the last six years, we've gone from $22 to $68 million. And yet, the property taxes, which you include in the text in the question, are only 7.5% of our city's budget. Those property taxes don't even cover the police contract. In Idaho, the city doesn't have the right to raise the tax rate and then use our assessments to calculate a huge tax increase. It's the increase to the city budget that's the controlling factor. And so we have the ability to spend that tax dollars, but we can't say, well, we need to do this, finish the sports park, so we need to raise our taxes by a huge chunk, several million dollars. That's not going to happen.
And Ms. Amy.
Hi. Ready? Thank you. So my approach to any budget, I've also been working with budgets for about 16 years or so. I was president of a state nursing organization. Right now, I'm treasurer of our Idaho nurse practitioner organization. So I've been looking at budgets for a long, long time, and this one is a little wonky, for lack of a better word, but I do like how things are listed out, and I would absolutely be looking at them with an objective eye and fresh eyes as well. And then as far as property taxes, or as far as taxes, I would not, I would do my very best not to raise any tax on the residents of Eagle. We're already paying a lot there. And yeah, so I would just work and make sure that, you know, I'd look at it like a business. You have to look at city government and the city like a business. And I've been a business owner for over 20 years, a newly opened business here at Eagle, and you have to look at the budget and see what's going to work and what's not.
Mr. Letts, your thoughts on the approach to city budgeting and property taxes?
Well, obviously, number one, you want to always spend within your means, but really, I have a problem with just depending on the growth. You know, we do have the development agreements, so we know that it's going to happen. But I really do think that we need to be spending more time getting some serious businesses to come in. We don't have to have them all inside the city itself. We have plenty in the perimeter areas where we can bring in businesses. People can live here, work here, spend their money here, and we have a lot of money going in and out through our towns that is not being spent here. We need to get more money spent into our town, and that'll help our tax base.
Okay. Could you pass the mic down to Ms. Merrill? City budget and property taxes.
City budget and property taxes. Our city is the third-lowest city for levy in the state of Idaho. Our taxes come from, our budget comes from growth with annexation and construction growth. With House Bill 389 in the last year was capped at 8%, so we're getting less money. Urban renewal is getting less money. But the important thing to know about our budget is that $68 million is, some of that is foregone, some of that is carryover, and you have to look at this as a yearly thing that happens. So we look at the, we look at our budget, and we look at what our wants and our needs are, can we sustain what we have? This is something that we really need, and we put it in the capital improvement plan, and we put it in the maintenance plan, taking care of maintenance first, and then other projects as they come along. It's important that we watch that budget and make sure that we keep it where it needs to belong, and that people can see it, and it's transparent. Thank you.
Mr. Gillis.
Yeah, it's hard to follow that. I agree with everything she said. I think it's constantly got to be evaluated. I think that you can't get so focused that you're missing the mark, your tunnel vision, you're not seeing the whole field. You don't want to get overly committed, not have the money to finish projects, and then you're looking at trying to raise property taxes. We are low in the scheme of things here, but take it a 3% increase for law enforcement is, you know, some people aren't happy with that. We are going to continue to grow. We talked about a $68 million budget, but the city's going to continue to grow. So we're going to have to find ways, and creative ways, to fund certain things, like law enforcement. And even with that 3% increase, we are still low. So my goal would be to reevaluate situations that are in the budget, possibly restructure things, restructure deals, have growth try to pay for itself in many cases as we can. What Tom said down there about bringing businesses in that do bring more to our economy, I agree with that, too. And I think it's just a constant revolving, kind of a seesaw-type thing where you got to go back and forth and constantly manage it. I don't think it's something you're going to stick with and not have some deviations.
Thank you. A reminder that I did not say at the beginning, if you would like a particular question to be asked, there are cards and pens that will walk back. Matthew will help you get them. If you can't get out of your row, we can pass them now. I'll try to incorporate the questions in after we go through a few of these meetings. So our next question will begin with Ms. Davis, and the city of Eagle...
I started the work.
She did the last one.
I get to go first now.
Mr. Bender will begin. The city of Eagle is just one of many jurisdictions that affect its residents. For instance, Ada County, Ada County Highway District, the transportation department, West Davis School District, and the Eagle Fire Protection District. How would you ensure a constructive, working relationship with surrounding jurisdictions?
Thank you. There's actually on my tax bill, there's 11 different taxing districts. You didn't mention Drake Creek Cemetery or the mosquito bit.
Okay.
The big ones, the schools, Ada County Highway, the county, all of these, taxed separately. I've talked to a lot of voters in the last month who just don't understand why we don't, as a city, make the roads get built first. We don't have that choice. We have Mary May, who's been a great liaison with ACHD. We have Craig Kwame, who's been a great liaison with the sewer district. That's what the four of us on the council have to do, is build these relationships with these other agencies. We can't make them do things, they can't make us do things. We have to work cooperatively in a cyclical process of considering and amending and considering and amending how we relate with each other.
Next is Ms. Amy. This is about working with the jurisdictions that surround you.
Yeah, so that is very important because all of those surrounding entities do affect Eagle and all of us. And so I would definitely open the lines of communication and ensure that either myself or others on council were acting as liaisons. Like in Yorba Linda, what we did was we had, the council would choose which entities they were going to, they wanted to be on, and then the mayor would appoint them. And I thought that was really good because then we have, the city of Yorba Linda, like our city of Eagle, would have representation on every single board, which I think that is super important because then we have a say in what goes on. And then at least, if we didn't have a say, we would know what's coming. And then, like Steve said, Mary May, she's on ACHD, and that is incredible because now we have actually a seat at that table, which is super important. So that's what I would do.
Mr. Letts.
I'd actually like to see some things changed when it comes down to developers, and developers taking more responsibility for infrastructure and the building of their neighborhoods that they want. If they take up that kind of work, then we can actually use the money that goes into ACHD and ITD and have those funds come to us more quickly so that we can actually work with the traffic that we need to take care of. We're trying to do everything. We are in a backlog. The 2008 economy, when it crashed, put us 10 years behind, and we're still catching up from there. Things have to change about how things are done with the roads, and it has to start with the development. A lot of things and a lot of problems that we have are all stemmed from the development itself. They need to get involved and they need to help us out.
Nancy. Ms. Davis. We are hearing about your ideas about maintaining constructive, working relationships with surrounding jurisdictions.
Thank you. That's super important, and I think that one of the things that we've done in Eagle before, and I think we would do it again, is we would be a squeaky wheel. We are a smaller city, and we don't get this funding sometimes for the state highways that run through our city or the county highways that run through our city. But when we go to the board meetings and when we can tell them our important needs are and we keep going, then our projects move up in scale and we can get more projects done that need to be done in our area. So I think it's super important that we stay involved and that we become involved in their committees and that we bring our citizens along. There's nothing more than to sit in a meeting and have a full of citizens that want the same thing. same thing that we do. They have much better voice than we do.
Mr. Lass?
I think that, like America first, it needs to be Eagle first. And I think that we need to constantly evaluate what's going on, where our problems are. And if we're formulating relationships with all these different districts, they listen to us, we listen to them, we give them our wish lists, and they tell us what they can do, and we kind of work together. I think that as one big team, we can get stuff done. If we're trying to do things that we're not seeing eye to eye, we're not communicating very well, it can cause more problems. And I think the biggest issue is to have open lines of communications, relationships, to make sure that when we have an issue like traffic in a certain area, or construction in a certain area, or more permits that are being asked for in a certain area, or work's not getting done, that we have people we can contact and have a relationship established to where we work well together. I would like us to be looked at as somebody that's openly communicating, not only with these different taxing districts, but with our community as one big team.
Ms. Davis?
Okay. I'm going to try and talk really fast. So, I hearken back to when I got my second degree from Boise State in 2019. It was in business, and marketing comes to mind. Marketing and networking. It's nice to say that, yes, we'd like more open lines of communication, but I think there needs to be a set schedule of periodic meetings for all of the different players to come together and talk about what they need to get accomplished. I don't think just going as a visiting person to the board is enough. I think we need to encourage regular meetings of minds and have more people available and work on problems at the same time together so that solutions can be enacted.
Thank you. Now, I believe you are on to the next question, correct?
Yep.
Yes. Okay. Did you see what I said? So, our next question is about traffic issues. Traffic issues always seem to be to impact Eagle. What do you see as the major transportation issues facing the city? And how would you navigate them when they are largely controlled by other jurisdictions?
That goes to me, right? Yeah.
So, traffic issues always seem to impact Eagle. What do you see as the major transportation issues facing the city? And how would you navigate them, given that they are largely controlled by other jurisdictions?
Okay, so, I think that the biggest problem, and no offense to anybody on ACHD that is here or Idaho Transportation Department, but when a city has control of its own roads, it's a lot smoother to get things done. We can budget for that and all that, so, but that's irrelevant because we do not have control. So, I think the best way to try and figure out the traffic situation is create, make sure that there's enough alternate routes to travel and complete these projects. For goodness sake, it seems like it takes forever to get the traffic project done. And so, it's just so frustrating for all of the businesses and all of the communities. And I think I answered the question.
And you, Mr. Lass, your thoughts on transportation? And what do you see as the biggest transportation issue facing Eagle?
Traffic. I drive for a living, okay? So, I have to plan everything that I do. I deliver medications, it's what I do. You got to be able to be willing to go around some places where you normally wouldn't go. So, where I'm at, I'm over by the Seventh Day Administ Church. I know that I'm going to hit traffic downtown, I'm going to go over Ballantyne and take that way, or I might go some other way. It takes a little bit of planning, you're going to take a little bit more time, and not expect to go through an intersection right away because it's not going to work. We just don't have it. Even with the mobility project, we are behind. You know, I honestly think that we are just going to be, we're not even going to be caught up when it's finished. We're about ready for another project. And I'm sorry, that's our reality right now. And until somebody, we are allowed to get wide and beacon light, wide and floating feather, we're going to have these problems. So, it really comes down to your driving. You got to take the time, you got to leave a little bit of, a little help to traffic.
And you, Ms. Merrill, as the light comes down, your thoughts on traffic issues, transportation issues, and working with those other jurisdictions?
Well, one of the things that we've done in Eagle that I, and I would hope that we continue, is the interconnection between our subdivisions. When you can run from Park Lane and go through four different subdivisions without ever getting onto the highway that is crammed full of cars, you are building another grid that's working through there. You'll see at the end of the subdivision, some of the roads will say, this road should be developed in the future. We need to continue that. Those interconnections will help build us another grid through our community. I think that's super important. The other thing is to engage with our road building people and making sure that we ask them, can you work at night? Can you work at night and keep our traffic going during the day? Because sometimes it's just impossible when you have to have traffic in constructions in the same day.
Mr. Lass, transportation issues?
I'm not saying that traffic is crippling Eagle, but traffic is crippling Eagle. Every single day, anywhere you try to go, every street you turn down, there's traffic. Why is there traffic? Another road's being dug up. Another project is starting, and you're having to look for detours. And when you find a detour, there's traffic on that, too. What I would like to see is that working relationship we talked about earlier with ACHD, with ITD, triaging these projects as best we can. When there's projects popping up from, I think, 2017 and prior, that are just coming to the top of the list now, that they're starting new ones over at Linder and 44 and Floating Feather and all these other ones that are coming up, there's got to be a way for us to be able to work with ACHD. Even though we come up to the top of the list, we need to finish something else before we start something else because it's just nonstop. And when these things start, and they're going to go for a year or two years, like we've seen on Old State Street, it causes, you know, a ripple effect across the entire city. People don't want to come here. We don't want that. We want people to come here.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Transportation.
Okay, this is hard because everybody has said something good. So, I'm going to go back to what I said before about working together with the other agencies. And I have looked at the budget, and I've seen line items that say, you know, ACHD something, and I don't know what that is. So, I want to investigate ways that we can help the other agencies get the projects expedited and finished in a more timely manner so that the residents don't have to put up with the time schedule that's been set. We can say, okay, as a city, we think this project is a priority. How can we help you finish it quicker? And what do we need to do to work together so that it gets done?
Mr. Bender?
Solving traffic is an engineering problem. I spent 20 years with Raytheon as a systems engineer, and I understand that. You could do it faster by closing a road. If we had tried to keep State Street open while we're doing that project down there, it would take twice as long because you have cars going by the workers. We're going to get done faster because Second to Eagle Road has been closed. What we can't do is force the developers to put in all of these new roads. The constitution says in Idaho that they're paying their fair share. We can't expect them to pay everybody else's share because they'll just get the city and get another lawsuit from the builders. And we've had enough of the lawsuits. Thank you.
All right, so we're ready for our next question, I think.
One question as well.
We will begin, Mr. Lass.
Okay.
So, Eagle has been experiencing rapid growth, as you've noticed. Have you grown in population by 80 percent since 2010, according to the latest estimates? What do you say to residents who want to see the city stop or slow down growth?
Well, we can't really say much with all the development agreements going on, and we really can't stop that because they're there. They've been over there for quite a while now. But you want to slow things down here, you want to slow growth, we got to either stop people moving here or we're just going to have to deal with it. We got, you know, Alamo is been added in. We got Sage Hill that's going to probably be coming up, which is next to it. We got also an plan for Eagle Island, and those are going to be annexed in. I don't see how we're going to be able to stop any of this. It's just going to continue. I wish I had some kind of answer for you, but there is no answer right now. And we keep depending on that growth for our taxes, and we need to go with commercials. So, somewhere along the line, if we can bring in more money through the commercial, we can slow down that growth. That's where the balance is.
Okay, now we'll go to Ms. Merrill with that question on growth.
Guided growth, careful growth. If you don't grow, you die, and we don't want to do that. But we will continue to grow. Eagle will continue to grow. Private property rights are important for people to redevelop their property that they have and what they need. We need to make sure that we put the right residential's in the right place, that they are the right types of residential's, and they are family type oriented. So, you will have families living in one area of, young families clear up through mom and pop back onto patio homes. We need to have, ensure that we have the right amount of open space, and this will help growth, too. The more that you have of this, the less homes that you can have in that area. So, just through careful growth, guided growth, will eliminate some of the growth that is coming in our way.
Thank you. Merrill?
I was asked this just last night at a meet and greet. Somebody asked me if we can put a moratorium on growth, and I said, that's not reality. We don't want a moratorium on growth. We need to continue to grow. It shows health of the city. It's an honor that people want to move here, but we want to keep it to the way we want to our standards. We need to have density at a certain level, lowering density if we can along the way, turning down projects like the council just did over by Eagle Island State Park, that they didn't feel that it should have gone in there. And I was proud of them when I read that, that they shut that down. That's what we need. We need leaders on the council, leaders in the mayor's office that are going to stand up for the citizens here. And with growth, keep our foot on the brake, always ready to hit the brake and slow it down a little bit, and make sure that we're getting the growth that we really need for the health of our city. But no, we don't want to shut it down. We want to continue to grow responsibly, like Nancy said.
Ms. Davis, growth?
Okay, growth in looking, I'm going to go back to the budget because I'm a numbers person in our tax account. So, the revenue is driven by our growth. So, we can't stop the growth if the city is going to be growing. But I believe people move to Idaho because of the independence that you have in Idaho and that there aren't constraining rules on top of you. And so, if you're a property owner, you have the same rights as everybody else. And if you want to retire and sell to a developer, I don't think the city has a right to tell you that you can't do that. It goes by the comprehensive plan, and the comprehensive plan needs to be evaluated before any changes to it, to make sure of the possible revenue that we can bring in with the plan the way it is before any changes happen. Those are the three that I wanted to hit on, property rights, growth, revenue, and comprehensive plan. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bender, your thoughts on growth?
Eagle's going to continue to grow. Eagle is, we've got projects in the pipeline, we've got new projects coming in. As these new projects coming in, we need to make sure that they're compliant with the standards we've set. We, as the council, have the ability to change those standards. There's a proposal currently working through the system to drop some of our density. That would help address some of these problems, but it won't completely solve them. Too many of our states around us have this idea that we all work for the government in those states. Here in Idaho, we remind our leaders that the government works for us. Our constitution protects private property rights, and people that decide they don't want to be farmers like their dad, their grandparent, their fourth and fifth generation Idaho family, they sell to developer, and we get more houses. If we stop that, we've solved our growth problem, but now we've created a budget problem, and we've got to make sure that we coordinate the two together.
Thank you. Ms. Amy?
So, yes, I mean, all of us would love to slow down the growth, but unfortunately, it's coming, and it's going to depend on if we're going to let it happen to us or if we're going to help manage it. And so, just like Steve was saying, there is, we do have a little bit of control over what goes on, but the growth is going to be here. And most of it is from decisions that have been made a decade ago or longer. So, we are limited in what we can do as far as growth, but my dream would be that I had, you know, when I moved here, that I also brought a giant gate with me, and I could just shut it behind me, but that's not reality. And so, like I said, the growth is coming. We need to be responsible. What that means is holding the developers to their contracts, making sure that they're not asking for other variances and all of that that we might be able to provide, but that we do not want to provide. So, that's very important on who you choose to be serving you on council.
Thank you. We're at the, another question?
No.
I'm going to start. So, in the last election cycle, Eagle's enhanced services contract with the Ada County Sheriff got a lot of attention. In your opinion, is it where it needs to be, and how would you, how would you promote public safety in the city going forward?
That's one of my favorite projects. I loved when we were able to start the contract with Ada County Sheriff. I believe we got the best of the best of the people that come out here, the officers, and from the day one, they have done nothing but take great care of us. I believe we've got a good contractor. Yes, it's growing. I asked somebody the other day, a gentleman asked me at one of the other meetings, will there ever be a time that we will run our own? There probably will be. There'll be a time when we're big enough that where we can have our own police department, but until then, we've got a good one. It's running well. They're taking good care of us. We're safe. We've got a great community because of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Davis.
I think we're where we need to be. I mean, we just got a tax increase, but they've added three sergeants, they've added a motor cop, they're got a K-9 unit in training, they're extending a school deputy over the summertime to deal with juvenile issues. So, there's increases that are happening as the population grows. There's barometers out there. I've talked to people about this 1,001 arbitrary ratio. Sometimes that's good, sometimes it's a little skewed. I think we need to constantly evaluate it with response times, calls for service, proactivity, and officer safety is an issue. We have two units that are in the city, and one goes to barrister to book somebody and leaves one unit out here, and there's a domestic violence call. They're waiting for backup from an area that's farther away. So, I think it's a moving scale also. I think we need to constantly evaluate it. But yes, I do think that the council and the mayor have done a great job.
Ms. Davis, the contract for Ada County Sheriff?
I believe that we are going in the right direction. I think that we need to increase as the population increases. I can call back to when I had a break-in in 2016, and I called for some assistance, and I thought that the time that I waited was unreasonable, and I didn't understand that it's because we didn't have enough local policemen to respond in a timely manner that shouldn't have happened. So, I believe we do need more police, and I am fully supportive of our police. I just want to make sure that we're getting a good price for what we're paying for.
Thank you. Mr. Bender, you have something, contract for Ada County Sheriff?
Well, Lass, earlier this year, the city completed a level service study, and this study was done by a reputable company that was able to tell us where we're deficient and where we're doing a good job. They gave us recommendations for moving forward. Every time we grow by 11 percent, they recommend we add another officer. Right now, we've got two deputies who are on Eagle PD in the back of the room, keeping a good eye on us. I appreciate them being here. We've got a great law enforcement team. I appreciate what the mayor's done with working on this contract and bringing in this organization that was able to tell us, these are the holes you need to plug. And when we do that, we're going to continue to maintain an outstanding law enforcement service. I mentioned in my opening statement, my uncle was director of law enforcement of the state. My dad joined the San Diego County Sheriff's Department when he was 57. We've got a lot of law enforcement in our family, and I appreciate all they do for us.
Ms. Amy?
Thank you. I am a huge supporter of law enforcement, and Yorblinda was one of the, I don't want to keep going back there, but it was one of the top five state of cities and out of the 482 cities in California for a reason. We always budget it. For a reason, we always budgeted it correctly for law enforcement. And I also appreciate what the mayor and current council have been doing as far as this, this contract. And a safe city is a free city. And so we definitely need to keep that as our priority. And oh my gosh, I forgot what I was going to say about law enforcement. I'm so sorry. If I remember it, I'll bring it up later.
Thank you.
Okay, so one officer for 1,000, 32 officers, that's the, yeah, the ratio works. We're not there yet. We just added three. We're in a good place right now. As these other projects are going to be growing, yes, we're going to need more. But keep one thing in mind, because we are with Ada County, we have mutual aid with Star. So if something does happen here, Star comes and helps us and we help them. They're also in the county. So they're already integrated, all right? That's a force multiplier. We are covered here. We help each other. It's the beauty of having Star and Eagle together like this. I think it's, we're working well and we're doing well. And I think we're going to be able to grow nicely and continue to protect our citizens.
I'm so sorry, I remembered what I was going to say. I'll take 10 seconds.
How about we'll let you come back to it in our closing second, in the closing second. Thank you. Okay, so then I believe Mr. Geller is starting the next one. We have several questions from the audience about budgets, budgets, costs, taxes. So the state's cutting right now. If you have a chance, is there something you would cut from the Eagle City budget? And what would that be?
I got to say, it's unfair for me to even answer that. I don't know what's in the city budget that may be something that I would want to cut. I think that that's something that I would have to be better educated in looking at the budget. I'm sure there's some fat in there that needs to be cut out, especially as high as the budget is, but I can't answer that without knowing what's in the budget.
Okay, Ms. Davis?
I would say that yes, we definitely need to examine each line item on the budget to see what is an inflated value and what is an accurate value. I also think that the decisions that the city makes needs to have the legal liability in mind before it's, before the decision is made so that it's not exposing the city to more lawsuits because that's very expensive. And we can easily cut legal fees by making smart decisions. That's, that's an easy cut right there of over $500,000 compared to the last year's budget.
Mr. Bender, anything you'd like to cut from the city budget?
Couple of things I've looked at, I need more data on. Those people that know me here in the room know that I kind of run on facts and data and can't always get from the budget document all the facts and all the data. One thing that I've thought about, but I don't have all the answers yet, we pay our city attorney on a contract basis and he bills us by the hour. Any of you that have ever worked with an attorney know that that can get very expensive very fast. Would it make more sense to bring a staff attorney on board? Maybe not. They may need a second attorney, they may need a para, and suddenly it's more than when we were paying on the contract. But last year, it was over $675,000. That's a lot of legal time. So maybe it makes sense. These are things that we need to look at and whichever of my colleagues here that, that are lucky enough to be on the council, I would hope that they would be looking at it. I'm sorry, I was looking at the moderator.
That's all right. Yes, sir, I didn't mean to distract you there. Thank you. Ms. Haynes, your thoughts about cuts on the budget?
Yes, thank you. So first of all, I would, I've been looking at it, but I'd have to go line by line to kind of see what, where exactly the fat is. And so the, one of the things that Danielle brought up was the legal issues and the legal costs are huge. So we have to make sure that we're making smart, legally sound decisions before we throw them out there. And there are lots of things that are very expensive, like having your own police department. Very expensive. It is exorbitantly expensive. And so contracting with OCSD or OC, I'm sorry, the Ada County sheriffs is very smart to do that. So I think cutting, I'd have to look, again, look at the budget, but there are a few things that we could, we could do, especially the legal cost. Oh, and then recalls, those are extremely expensive for cities. Special elections, those are also very expensive for cities. We want to make sure that we avoid those.
Thank you. So Les, do you have any thoughts on budget?
We have $450,000, 50,000 acres of BLM land that you can go shoot at at any time. We do not need to build a shooting range. It is not necessary. Four million in cost, $62,000 a year. Thank you Nancy Merrill for that information, by the way, for upkeep for a year, that right away. I still argue against the fiber optic project. You've got, you have providers that are coming in and are going to upgrade the system. They're going to pay for it. It doesn't have to come out of our budget. Those do not need to be there. And I understand, and they're sitting right there, that we get a grant for it, it's coming from the federal government, but we shouldn't be taking that money to begin with because we aren't a rural community that needs that kind of help. We're Eagle. We're big. We don't need that. That's where places up in the hills.
Thank you. Could you pass that down? Ms. Merrill, your thoughts about anything you might have come with the budget?
Oh, yeah, there's a, there's a few things that we could look at, I do think so. We need at one time do some contracting with our maintenance and our lawn mowing and that. And I look at the equipment that we have now and the number of employees that we have now and then push came to shove and we needed to do something. I would think that that may be one that we could turn back a bit. Another one that I think that we might have to look at if we ran into a pinch, and I know this because I was 80% lost my budget, 80% when I was Idaho State Parks Director and I had to keep parks open. So you cut when you have to cut, you have to keep open your recreation that you can keep open and the frivolity of those, the yoga classes and the painting classes might have to go. So those are some of the things that I think that we'd have to look at to see if we can really keep them or if we can sustain them if our budget gets soon. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe our, Ms. Davis starts the next question, correct? Okay. Shooting at the shooting range. I have to be honest, I'm not sure what this is about. So you went to, maybe, how do you feel about the public sector providing shooting range, firearm shooting range, and then the private sector also is on? Or do you have a stance on shooting ranges?
My stance on shooting ranges, I don't really have one. I am not much for guns personally. I know that I have shot a gun and I am a good shot, but they are scary to me. I don't want to accidentally hurt someone with it. So I leave that up to the professionals who are good with guns and it's their job to handle them. I don't think that we need to have two shooting ranges. I think that if there's one provided and there's adequate training for our service members who need the training with firearms, I think that's sufficient. I don't think that we need another one just so that we can go and shoot in the hills. And as a, as a livestock owner, I used to have horses, I would get really upset when people would shoot around my horses and drive them crazy.
Mr. Bender?
Some of you know I'm an NRA instructor, I have been for over a decade. I am a firearms enthusiast. I'd be glad to teach you to shoot, Danielle.
I know how to. I'm good. I just don't do it.
I'm also a conservative. And I get the idea of having an Eagle City shooting sports park, but as I've said before, there's pieces of that puzzle that haven't been fully considered. And as a conservative, that's the type of business that should be provided by the private sector. I don't have a problem with private sector range opening up in Eagle, but it's not something that I believe our taxpayers and our citizens should be devoting a lot of their budget to funding. I would rather see a private group come in and set up a range here in Eagles so I don't have to drive all the way down to the, the public ranges on the other side of the freeway. I do believe in safety. I'm concerned about Crowfoot because of Charlie Bond's concern that we may be subject to liability if they shut down. I don't have an answer for that yet.
Okay, sorry. One of the bad things about being the moderator is to interrupt people occasionally. My apologies. Ms. Haynes, your thoughts on the shooting range?
Hi, so I'm going shooting this weekend. Super happy. The, so Crowfoot is opening, whether we, whether the city donates the $246,000 to it or not. It's a range that's located in Adamore. It's not owned by Adamore. It's, Adamore donated that property to the shooting range. It is a mile and a half away from the closest fence, structure, or home. So I'm, you know, we're, we're good with the shooting range. It's going to be fairly close. It's happening whether we donate to it or not. The city owned, I don't know. I mean, I know that once we sign the contract and it goes forward as far as adding to the archery range, then lawsuits are starting to happen. The residents of, the neighbors there have already said they're going to file a lawsuit. So right there, that's going to start costing us some money. So I'm not for the city one at this moment. Crowfoot's happening, so.
Thank you, Mr. Les.
In case you're unaware, we're already in a lawsuit with that shooting range because the developer hasn't been paid. And they're looking at us paying some money to Crowfoot to be a public partner to help promote Crowfoot. Okay, so I've already, you already know how I feel about the shooting range. I'm a car enthusiast. I think we should have a car track. I mean, what are we, what are we talking about here? How much are we willing to pay? We cannot sit there and entertain everybody's idea of having what we want here. It's not realistic, all right? I would love to have places for everybody to do what we want, but it's just not in the cards. And physically, it's going to kill us. It just will. Those people up there, if they, if we start building that range, if we can get through everything and start building that range, we are going to be in a lawsuit. Those people had a real expectation that there was not going to be a shooting range next to their houses. So no, I'm, I'm a full stop now.
As to Mike Bender, Ms. Merrill, your thoughts on the shooting range?
I had a chance to look at this carefully. I read the contract and the proposal for the City of Eagle's shooting range. And then I went up and looked at the range that Crowfoot is, is offering up there on the, off of Highway 55 and up Pearl. What I found was that the road driving up Willow Creek is way too dangerous for a lot of traffic going that way. It's too close to homes. There are people that are getting their actually shells in their home siding and in their sprinkler pipes up there with the shooting that's going on up there now. I don't think we need to exacerbate it. The city is offering $3 million for a shooting range and a 67, almost $68,000 a year maintenance for a shooting range in that area. They've done a great job putting the archery up there and that's a perfect place for that with the targets. Crowfoot is offering a shooting range that is more of a private, but with membership in a perfect location. Public-private partnerships are something that we need to think about and doing. There's been no commitment from the City of Eagle for anything. There's opportunities to participate in it. And I would encourage if the citizens of Eagle want to do that, that they would be talking to the mayor and the council for that.
Thank you. Mr. Bill, your thoughts on the shooting?
I've been on the fence with the shooting ranges. I met with a bunch of the residents on Willow Creek. What they're saying is correct. The Willow Creek residents do not want it up there. The roads are dangerous. They've got livestock up there. They've got houses up there. There are a lot of concerns up there. My concerns are the costs, the potential lawsuits as soon as the first shot's going to be fired. Crowfoot, I also talked to them up there. I talked to Bill Godfrey and, you know, I get the premise behind doing the range up there. They already went through the lawsuit. Thank you Fly. They went through the lawsuit already with Horseshoe Bend residents and Crowfoot won. They've already gone through the lawsuit process. They won. So there is a potential of getting a range at Crowfoot. Outside shooting with range masters, teaching kids responsible gun, gunsmanship, you know, shooting weapons and all different kinds of weapons in a controlled environment is better than being out in the desert up in BLM land, starting another fire. We've had multiple fires in North Eagle area and some have been started by people shooting. So I do like the range idea. I do shoot, but I'm not sure that I'm with that Eagle range.
Thank you. Just a reminder that if you have a question you would like the panel to address, there are some parts in there in the back for you to write other questions down on that. Someone will run it up here to me. Okay, our next question comes from the audience and we will start with Mr. Bender. How do you feel about, what is your position, Bender, on the spread of high density housing in Eagle?
I've been talking to a lot of voters over the last five weeks, six weeks, and what I'm hearing from almost all of them is they don't like the Clara apartments, they don't like all the apartments coming into Eagle. We do have a lot of apartments already in the pipeline and that's not Eagle's nature. It just isn't. We don't want to be another Meridian. I'd go down Eagle Road, I'd go into the village, I look at all of the complexes around it. Our residents don't want that in this city. We need a little bit. We have a little bit. We've met that need and we don't want to be Meridian North.
So how do I feel about it?
Yeah, what's your position on the high density sprawl?
I'm not in favor of it. We do need some workforce housing and thankfully, Adamore and Melnovah have a small or a portion of their new homes that are going in. They're beautiful townhomes and so, you know, they're, they're designed well and I think that's going to be great for our workforce versus teachers, law enforcement. So, but yeah, my feeling on the high density sprawl is no, I don't, I don't like that at all. I came from that. I don't want it here. So, but I do understand we do need some workforce housing. That does not mean apartments. It could be beautiful townhomes and condos.
Mr. Les, your position on high density housing?
Nobody wants to live in an apartment. If you ever done that, that's not fun. I did 36 years in LA and I was apartment manager for a short period of time. And I'll never do that again. It's, you know, obviously they don't care for the places. It looks ugly. It does. Let's face it, we don't want it in our town. Nobody does. But we still have questions though about what we do with a lot of the area and it's all in the perimeters. And we're not even talking about in the middle of town. We don't, they're not going to happen. I'm not for it. I'm against having apartments. But I don't know, again, this is one of those things where you're going to have to look at a property owner and their rights and what they want to build. And you're going to have to look at that and take that into consideration, you know, being, if I'm on the council, we are going to have to look at it. And unfortunately, that will be part of the job.
Ms. Merrill, your, your thoughts on high density housing?
I don't like high density housing either. Mixed use was never meant to be apartments. It was set aside so that we would have mixed use with retail, townhomes, and businesses. That was mixed use and that has grown into a high density situation on that. I believe that we have enough apartments. What we need now is we need to have more room. We need to have more room. Our setbacks have grown smaller and smaller. You can't hardly move your trash can back for, in and out of your, beside your side of your house. Your trucks don't fit in your driveways. These densities and this smaller of the setbacks. The homes you can fit on the lots based upon the size of the home to the lot size. Right now, we're crowding the big homes onto the small lots because it's easier for, more economical for the builders to build. And, but it certainly isn't helping us with our associability with our people.
Mr. Bill?
I'm against it. There's a project coming up, I believe it's called Molinari Project, over behind Albertson's off of Eagle and Plaza. There's more apartments coming. There's more buildings coming. And I think we have enough. And it's difficult because I have to balance that too. I have kids that can't even afford to live on their own right now. But if they do, there are places around us called Meridian and Garden City and Boise and Star. And we need to keep Eagle to a certain standard. And I'm not trying to sound wholehearted, but we do need to keep a certain standard for our town. And I am against dense housing. I think that we need to look at constantly lower density, density projects. And that's, that's, I think it's a no-brainer for me personally.
Ms. Davis?
Okay, you guys are going to hate me. I look at it from the numbers. I personally live in a townhome. I bought a townhome next door for I bought a townhome next door for family to live in. There are different stages, at different stages in your life, you have the need for different types of housing. And numbers-wise, I know, I'm trying. Numbers-wise, density, our, there's been a lot of talk about businesses coming into Eagle. Businesses, our business, our sales tax is allocated on a per capita basis. If we reduce density, we shoot ourselves in the foot on revenue. And we're talking about budget cuts. If we reduce our density, we are going to be forced into cutting our budgets in hard ways. I think we need to grow responsibly. I don't want apartments, but I think townhomes and condos can be done tastefully. And I think that's good.
Thank you. Our next question is about downtown. The heart of downtown Eagle has seen an exorbitant amount of construction over the past three years. What is your vision for downtown Eagle? And how specifically will you work to help realize that vision?
I, yeah, okay. So I've seen such huge changes in the last several years to downtown Eagle. I would love to keep Eagle or downtown, the, like, Main Street, if you will, of all the charming businesses and that. And so I would work with, you know, the other council members and the mayor and the other businesses and the business owners to ensure that it stays financially sustainable and viable. And we'd wanna just keep, keep that small-town charm and then have maybe on the perimeter of the city or back by Hill Road perhaps, some other businesses to help sustain the tax base for Eagle.
Thank you. Mr. Bender, your thoughts on downtown construction and the vision for downtown?
Parking. Parking. State Street, Eagle has a lot. I call it the hole. Boise had the hole. A lot of you long-time residents knew about the hole. They had this hole down and down in Boise. Nothing got built for years and years. Finally got built. The old gas station used to be over there where the Chevron is. Seems like a perfect place to have a municipal parking lot. For a short time, we did have one there. I don't see why we can't use that. But I don't see us expanding at this point in downtown itself. We are pretty well packed in. And if parking is based on square footage, those businesses are not hitting the mark. We don't have enough parking for them. But we wanna bring more people in. And then we have the market. And we have no people for it. Or they don't use the church extra parking lot that we have to use, that we had, what was it, the fall carnival or whatever it was just the other day? And apparently, nobody used the parking lot because they didn't know it was there or it was available. Parking is the biggest key for downtown.
Thank you very much. Ms. Merrill, your thoughts about the downtown vision and construction?
I can hardly wait till it's over. I think everyone can. We'll be happy to get Heritage Park back and then events back into the downtown. I think we can plan some more events in that downtown area that will help strengthen our businesses and really feature our businesses. I do think one of the things that we need to look at, especially in that downtown area, is that in lieu of parking, that means that if a building comes in and they don't have parking, they can put money into a fund for parking someplace else. In my stance, I think that we need to think about really is no in lieu of parking. If you don't have the parking, you don't build the building. And you don't do it there. And so we need to leave more cognizant of the need for building, both up and surface parking lots. So looking for that.
Thank you. Mr. Bender, your thoughts on downtown and the vision for downtown?
I think there's light at the end of the tunnel. It's coming quick. Heritage Park's gonna be up and running. The construction will finally get done. The businesses that have been suffering through COVID and coming in through this construction project that's been going on with the Hemingway Building is gonna be completed. I think that everything is looking up, but I think we need to make them a priority. I think we need to keep the communication going with the business owners. I think we need to prop those businesses up and bring some functions back to the city down there. I think that the old-town charm and the character of our town is important. We're gonna grow. Growth is inevitable and change is inevitable, but how do we manage it? And we need to keep those businesses thriving before we bring in a ton of new businesses. There is a new one that's coming soon. We met last night a business owner and we're excited about it. She's excited to get into the area there. But we need to get her thriving too. We need people to be flourishing with customers. And we need to bring those people back to the downtown. I don't even like going there. We park at McDonald's and walk over the bridge so I can avoid it. So I would, I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you. Ms. Davis?
Okay, so downtown, I think to make it profitable, we need to focus on more community events downtown, drawing all of the businesses together. When I said that businesses only, that they don't benefit the city with their sales tax so much because it's based on per capita, it does benefit the city by supporting the local owners of those businesses. And I talked with owners downtown and they, there's a big struggle between the city and the business owners. And I think the way to work through it is to talk, like I said, talk together and have everybody come to the table to work on a solution for what's down, for what's down there. And parking is a problem. Parking is a problem.
Mr. Bender?
The heart of Eagle is our quaint, older buildings down there. I definitely do not want to see, there's an old joke about, you know, don't lose heart. They'll want to cut it out and they'll want to avoid a lengthy search. We've got to steer clear of the builders that want to come in and cut out the heart of our downtown. We've got to have people that come in and the 55 State Street building, I've heard a lot of complaining about it. It would be nice if they had done it in limestone, like the bank and the library and the hotel, or in red brick, like the Century Building. They didn't do that. It's kind of from many people's perspective and I saw. With what's left down there, we have got to make sure moving forward, we are maintaining that unique Eagle sense that we've all been able to enjoy, those of us that have been here for years and years. Thank you. Next one up next.
So I think I messed up my order here, but let's have, you're next, right?
I was first.
Okay. This is a question from a crowd. They wanna know what your thoughts are about the return of the farmer's market to downtown. Do you have a position on this?
Well, bring it back. I mean, I understand that they like it there, but I mean, at some point, you really have to start saying, hey, look, what about our traditions? I mean, I understand they like it there. I really do. But, oh, there's a new rule that says that if they don't make $5,000, they don't have to report some of their taxes and stuff like that. And so I don't know how much they're actually bringing to our tax base by being here. Maybe I got that wrong. I don't know. It's something I read. But, you know, we need to stop taking away our traditions. If you've been here for a long time, the market was over at Heritage Park. They wanted to rebuild the Heritage Park and do a $3 million renovation of it. It was way uncalled for. Nancy Merrill spearheaded that one. I helped her out. We stopped it. It's a smaller project and we kept the park. And it's gonna be there for our tradition. And I think we bring back the market to Heritage Park.
Ms. Merrill, your thoughts about the farmer's market?
We need to come home. That's where it started and that's where it needs to come back to. We have plenty of space downtown. And we have a new Aiken Street that would be perfect for a farmer's market as well as First Street and Heritage Park. Once that all gets going, that will hold plenty of vendors, bring lots of people downtown. It'll help stimulate the businesses and the other businesses that are down there. They just need to come home.
Thank you, Mr. Gillis.
I can beat a dead horse, but I 1,000% agree with Nancy on that. I think it needs to come back downtown, period.
I have to write some more questions after the answer of this quick sentence. Ms. Davis, your thoughts on the farm?
I specifically talked with a business owner downtown. And she wanted to talk to me because I said that originally I wanted it to come back home to downtown because I liked the acquaintance. But then after talking to vendors at the market, that they wanted it to stay at City Hall. So I listened to her and I believe that you have to look at the numbers. She said that her sales had dropped tremendously. And if that is true, I think it needs to go back because we need to support our business owners. But I do think that there is a compromise that can be found between the vendors at City Hall and the downtown business owners. I don't think it needs to be one or the other decision. I just don't.
Mr. Bender, your thoughts on the farmer's market?
Council made it clear at the beginning of the year, it goes back downtown. I support that decision. The market needs to be downtown. That's Eagle. But here's a crazy thought. Why not use both locations? We're a lot bigger than we were when that market started. A lot bigger. We've got a lot more vendors that have come in with the extra space at City Hall. I can't think of a reason why we can't use both locations, make it an even bigger event. It's a four-block walk from Heritage Park to City Hall. Almost everybody can make that walk. I know there's candidates here that have been walking every day, knocking on doors, can do that in a heartbeat. And we need, we need to support our downtown and support our vendors that are coming in from outside. Let's, let's use both spaces. Let's make it an even bigger, greater event.
Ms. Davis?
Thank you. Yes, I think, because the moving the farmer's market to City Hall was a temporary thing while Heritage Park was getting worked on. And so I would love to bring it back there. And I've talked to several business owners that want it back at Heritage Park. It's, you know, again, it goes back to the charm of the city. I've talked to other people that have said, well, gosh, you know, we've outgrown that. We're bigger now and we want it to stay at City Hall. And so I'm also wondering though about the businesses on the more the western end, like Hope Blooms and all of those places down there. They're also entitled to having some kind of visibility, you know, as far as for the farmer's market. And so that's where I would think to working, or I would wanna be working with the Chamber of Commerce and kind of bringing everybody together, even businesses that might not be members of the Chamber, but just to keep it so that we have a larger presence. And, yeah, so there were arguments for and against, but I would really like to keep it at Heritage Park and maybe close the streets. And I think that would be worth the three months fee that it would cost the city to do that.
Okay, Ms. Merrill, you're first. She's the first to answer our next question. As a city council member, you would be one-fourth of the legislative body. In order to implement your priorities, you will need buy-in from other city council members. How would you ensure a constructive relationship with them?
Well, number one, you have to listen to each other and you have to build relationships with each other and trust. And I think that the years that I was on city council and Eagle was, we got so much done because it was a well-working, well-greased machine that we worked together. We didn't always agree. Sometimes we'd say we didn't vote for each other, but when the vote was done, we supported each other. And I think that that's critical in any kind of a city council situation. Everyone has great ideas. We need to listen to each other. We need to support each other when we can and together we're better. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bender.
I think we buy into being a team. I think that when we have teamwork, you can accomplish anything. In my whole career, I was part of a team. Whether I was on an ambulance, whether I was in a police car, whether I was doing a search warrant, whether I was in court with prosecutors and defense attorneys and you name it. It was a team. And I would bring that teamwork aspect to the city council. I think that when we form relationships, we listen to each other, we hear everybody's ideas, we hash stuff out, we can communicate. I think that we can get anything done. And I think it's all positive from here on out. That's all I'm looking forward to. I'm kind of excited to get in there and do it and really start putting action into place, so.
Thank you. Ms. Davis, your thoughts about building your relationships together council?
Obviously, you need to work together. I have a lot of experience with this. My dad was a career Navy person, very much a stout, strong Republican from upstate New York. And my mom just happened to be a Democrat from Milwaukee, Wisconsin. And I was constantly in the middle as an only child, trying to get them to agree and not fight on things. So this is nothing out of my wheelhouse. I am totally capable of seeing the big picture and working with two opposing sides, forming a relationship and teamwork.
Mr. Bender?
Well, I already have a great relationship with Craig Kwame and with Mary May. Mary May's my alternate in precinct 1408. I was Craig's treasure. We've been friends for years. And I believe that we will have a very strong working relationship if I'm on the council. And I would hope that Nancy, Rob, Danielle, Ben, Tom, Kenny's at his family birthday event. He's not here tonight. We can build good working relationships. The idea is based on communication and agreeing to disagree sometimes. I don't expect every vote to be 4-0. We may have several 3-1s. We may have 2-2 ties and toss it to the mayor and make the decision. But I believe that this council in the next two years is gonna be a very cooperative and functional group that's gonna accomplish a lot for the City of Eagle.
Thank you. Ms. Davis, your thoughts about relationships among the city council members?
Yes, so you definitely have to have an open mind and bring your thoughts and bring your respect. And what I really liked when I was on council for eight years in another city is that we all had respect for each other and it was great. It was a great working relationship. There was no animosity. There was retired law enforcement on there. I was a small business owner, so I came at it with that lens. So I offered a different perspective. And sometimes I was the only one that thought that way. And at the end of the meeting, they all kind of came around and we ended up saving $1 million for when an In-N-Out came to the town. But, so it's always just mutual respect, listening to each other, having an open mind and not going in and saying, my way is the way it's gonna be. Because I always learn something in every relationship that I have. I always learn something. And so I go in with an open mind. I want to learn and I wanna be challenged. But then I would wanna work with someone, with people that would want to be challenged.
Mr. Bender?
Okay, I'm on Nextdoor a lot. And one of the things that always comes up is there's always a give and take. I do not learn anything if I just talk to people that I agree with. There's no way that I'm going to grow if that continues like that. I have to talk to people that I disagree with to be able to come to consensus, which is exactly what our government was built on. But from the very beginning, we had to come to a consensus. You guys are part of that. You are the fifth man. So we have to listen to you guys too. It's not just us getting along here. We gotta keep you guys in the loop. It's our job to make sure you stay in the loop. So when you got a complaint, you can come to us and think, oh, he's not gonna listen to us. He's always got a preconceived notion about that. No, we're all in this. We all gonna get along.
Okay, I believe the next question will begin with Mr. Gillis, correct?
Yes.
This is from an audience. It's a proposal to develop a Costco at Hill and 55 comes before you as a council member. What concerns do you have with that proposal? And how would you go about addressing them? Would you support it or not?
This is an interesting one. It keeps coming up. I know it was an idea that was floated and it kind of took off like wildfire. I know they're talking about 55 and Hill Road. Immediate concern would be traffic. There's already been multiple fatal accidents on 55 at Hill, at Floating Feather. So it's a concern. Traffic's already bad enough around town. There's been talk about the Three-City River Crossing punching 55 from the 44 down to Chindon to alleviate some traffic if it were to happen. That's something that maybe we need to look at, see if we can get Boise's cooperation in this. I don't know that that's even a thing. I know that it would be coming into the city and there's positives with it, but if we don't take it into the city, then they're already talking about possibly putting it outside of Dry Creek, across on the other side of 55 or off of 44 just outside of our town by Horseshoe Bend Road. So I think there's a lot to look at with Costco. I'd rather go to, for myself personally. I'd rather go to, for myself personally, Ten Mile and Chindon, and I'm perfectly fine with that. But I need to listen, like we keep talking about, we're going to listen to the people. So that's where I stand on it. I got to listen in here on the other end.
Appreciate your insight, Ms. Davis, your response about Costco at Hill and 55.
Okay, I talked to some people briefly about this and they said, yeah, that would be in my neighborhood. And yeah, it would be cool to go to a Costco that close to my house. And then by the end of the conversation, they had changed their minds and said that they didn't want it coming in that close to their house. So it's a hot, you know, it's a hot topic. I think that as a council member, we are constrained by the comprehensive plan and what we can approve and what we can't approve, we need to follow the rules that are set. And we also need to realize that there are private property owners that could be involved and we need to respect their rights also. So it's a balancing act. It's a balancing act and I think that it needs to be examined on an individual basis.
Thank you, Mr. Bender.
Three, maybe four years ago, we approved a project in there. It was mixed-use, smaller buildings with office space, medical facilities, potentially a theater going in up against the hill on the east side. Looked like a really, really good project. They can't get it funded and built. Costco's interested. I live up at Floating Feather and 55. I think it'd be convenient to have one that close, except I think by the time you solve the traffic problem there, it takes the same amount of time to go over to Ten Mile, as it will to get into that Costco and back out again. I don't understand how you address the traffic concerns. I can guarantee that ITD will not allow an exit and entrance off of 55. They will make you use Hill Road. You can't get up the hill to Horseshoe Bend Road. So Hill Road will have to be completely redesigned and I will want to take a very, very close look at that traffic study. And you're going to have to convince me that it makes sense because right now I don't see how that's possible. I just don't. And without traffic flow, we can't have a Costco.
Thank you so much. Ms. Davis, your thoughts on the Costco, potential Costco development?
Yeah, so so far it's just whispers and I've heard from both sides. I was at one of my meet and greets the other night and 100% of the people there were against it. So it's very interesting. I mean, as far as theoretically, it would be a blessing for Eagle as far as tax revenue and services and product and all of that stuff. But of course, we would have to look at the traffic, the ingress and egress, how ITD would handle it. Because basically, ITD and ACHD, they just want to move traffic. They're not interested in how easy it is for people, you know, living around the area. So I would definitely have to look at traffic analysis and other, you know, building ramifications as well. And then, of course, have the residents' input. But if the plot is sold, you know, by private property, private property rights would take precedence, so we would have to see what's going on there. So but personally, I think it would be a blessing and a curse.
Thank you. Mr. Lutz?
Well, the mixed-use thing you were talking about before, one of the contingencies that that owner, property owner had was that ITD redid that intersection over there and that was never going to happen. It's always been a heart, and that's been, for years, we've been hearing about that project. But I mean, okay, well, jobs, jobs is going to be there. Yeah, we're going to have traffic, but we're going to have people coming here and they're going to be spending money in our businesses and then they're going to go home. They're not going to stay here. So we're going to make some money here, all right? Yeah, we're going to have, trafficking's not going to go away. We're still going to build traffic. We're going to build homes. So I, traffic, she wasn't going to be an issue, really. That, the 55 there, it's going to be widened. They're going to widen up that way, for sure, especially with Abimore growing and then the prospect of Sage Hill moving up there. So I don't know. I honestly, I'll be honest with you, I like the idea of Costco coming into town.
Can you pass that down, please? Ms. Merrill, your last point to answer about Costco and a new Costco at Hill and 55.
Okay, not at that location. I think that's a poor location for a lot of reasons, of the way that the road slopes and the way that the number of homes that are around it. I do think that when we planned our city way back when, we planned for the four corners of the city to carry regional shopping. That was Home Depot and that was WinCo and that HepCo that are there now. It was the Fred Meyers that's up on the corner of Linder and Chindon there. That's, those are regional shoppings. If we did another Costco, I think that we would have to find a place on one of those corners or in one of the other areas that would allow for Costco to come. I think it's a good business. It would provide jobs, I think, opportunities, but not at that Highway 55 and Hill Road location. I would support it maybe in another location if it was a better spot and we could have it there.
Thank you. Now, our final question to the panel before closing statements. What are your thoughts on Eagle Regional Sports Park? I believe, Ms. Davis, your thoughts?
My thoughts on the sports park? I have heard about it for quite a while. I think that it is a project that needs to be finished. I think if it drives on for too much longer, then we have to look at the fiscal responsibility of having to link the park. I mean, I know that it is something that people want and it's wonderful and it's going to be a source of revenue possibly in the future, but it's not now and it's a huge capital project. And I think we need to finish it as quickly as possible and as fiscally responsible as we can. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Bender, your thoughts on the regional sports park?
I helped build a state sports park in Virginia for Virginia Soccer Association. Fifteen fields, some of them turf, some of them lighted. It brings in a lot of kids and their families. We can't tie it in with the new professional soccer stadium because that's in Boise, but this will be an asset to Eagle, to have that large park out there. But we need to do more than just put in that one big park. We have lots of neighborhoods in older Eagle. We have almost no parks west of Eagle Road. One of our builders is putting in a turnkey park now that's going to be open soon. We need to encourage our builders as they're bringing in these new projects in the land that's left out in the west of Eagle to include parks and make parkland available, not just for their community as HOA property, but as city property and deed it to the city so we have parks on the west side of Eagle.
Ms. Davis, your thoughts about the regional sports park?
So the sports park would be fantastic and like others have said, it would bring in a lot of kids, a lot of families, and it's something that would be great for the community. It is the number one priority of the CIP that the council just discussed last night. And it's going to be expensive. We would have to do it in phases. It's also dependent on the Valnova Development Project because they're also going to help fund that through impact fees and other things. So I love it, but it would be definitely a phased-in project. There's no way we could afford to do it all at once. So it's going to be probably years before it's done, but I'm all for it.
Mr. Lutz?
Well, I'm not a fan about the way it's been going about, but we're already committed to it since we purchased the property. Phased-in is a good way to go. We don't need to do it all at once. So we're looking at realistically it being a boon to us in about 10, 15 years. We are going to be in competition with the new spot over here, over in, at LeBlanc Park with the sports stadium there, and they're doing soccer fields and baseball fields as well. So it's not going to be, it's a pipe dream that we're going to make a lot of money off of this. It's going to take some time. We will be in competition, but I think their regional park going through the county and their private situation is a lot better than the situation we have now. I don't know if we have something going on. I know that we've been talking, they've been talking about getting a private entity. I still don't know. I haven't heard anything. But if that's the way we're going to go, we'll be a lot better off than where we are right now.
Thank you, Ms. Merrill. Thank you, Ms. Merrill, for your thoughts on the regional sports park.
I love the idea of the regional sports park. It's been long in the planning and what I really love is the way that it's being funded. And with all the donations and the money that we save from the sale of one property, park plan property, put into another park plan property is very innovative. I do think we'll get it done before then. I built five parks. I was involved with five parks during my tenure and we did it innovatively by a lot of donations and working with public-private partnerships, finding donors, and I think we can make it work and I think that it's a good project and I look forward to being involved with it and making it happen and being completed.
Mr. Gillis?
I'm in support of it. I'm only concerned about the funding of it and how it's being funded and if we're finding more money for it to complete it and if we're not getting buried in the project, it's never-ending, it's not going to happen. So if I see the plan and I have not looked at it myself, so I'm talking out of line because I don't know what it says, but if there's a mechanism in place to fund it, I absolutely think we should do it. I think it's great for the city, bringing kids into the city, sports into the city. That means people staying in our hotels that are being built already, using our businesses on Old State Street, it's a destination location. We've got the businesses back open again. It's a cool town. We've got a great park. We've got sports. I think it's a positive thing for our city as long as we can fund it properly.
Thank you. Now, it's time for the closing statements. So our timer goes to two minutes. And since we started at this end of the table at the beginning, let's start with Mr. Lutz to make your closing statements.
Go back down this way.
Yeah, because I'll boost that.
Okay. I've been here 26 years. I've been here for a while. One of the things I've done has been learning the history of the town. It's more important to me than wherever I came from. I always had a thought process that when I came in here, you don't mess with the locals. This is your place. So I got to fit in. I don't make myself have you accommodate me. So I love this place. I really do. This is 36 years, born and raised in the same, in LA. Only one of my family born in these states. Everybody else is from Germany. If I'd known better or if I had a choice, I would have loved to have lived here. It's just a fantastic place. I have time. I want to help. I really want to be a part of the longevity of the town and give something to a place that I really do care about. I'm afforded the opportunity to be able to do so. I hope you guys give me a chance, at least look at me. I know that I don't have the experience with all these folks up here, but I do know that they're all willing to work as hard and I will do my darndest and I will be available to you and I will listen to you. You want me to come out and hear something? You want to talk to me? You reach out. I'm going to be there. I'm going to give everything that I got. Thank you.
Ms. Davis, closing statement?
Hi, thank you. It feels like life goes by so fast and I feel like I woke up yesterday and I was 60 and I'm like, oh my gosh, where did my life go? And so all up until that, you know, until now and even beyond, of course, I have this heart of service and I've been serving my communities, I've been serving my profession for as long as I can remember. I was a Republican delegate when I was 21, so that was 39 years ago. And so I've been involved. I've been volunteer, you know, too many times to count, but I did take up some notes so I don't forget because at my age, you forget what you're talking about. And so my dad, I opened up my first business when I was 21. My dad was an entrepreneur, so it was very natural for me to get into business. And then my uncle taught microbiology and immunology at the UCLA School of Medicine. So it was very natural for me to get involved in healthcare. And then I also serve on my nurse practitioner board as treasurer. I've been on the transportation corridors agencies. I've been, I served on the board of the Orange County Fire Authority. I've been on the board of a credit union, $2 billion credit union. I just, you know, I volunteer on all these agencies because I really care about the community and that's what, that's the reason that I'm volunteering to serve Eagle. I love Eagle. And I wrote a textbook, two editions of a textbook for nurse practitioners and that takes a lot of reading and writing. And I'll tell you, serving on council takes a lot of reading, as you guys can attest to. And I love to read, so I can hit the ground running. I have eight years of recent experience serving on council and building consensus and working with others to get things done and move a city forward responsibly. With my experience, I have also been able to see opportunities and challenges that we might have.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry to talk over you there.
That's okay.
That's what they do before. Ms. Bender, your closing statement?
I have always been someone who gets involved early and works hard for whatever I get involved in. As a freshman, I went to summer orientation when I went to school. I got recruited to come back as a freshman orientation counselor before I even took a class and was helping other freshmen get oriented to our university. I got involved early with the Senate as an intern and they hired me back two weeks after I graduated from college, the next semester. When I moved to Eagle, I was involved within six weeks of being here. I worked hard to get Brad Pike elected to the council. I worked hard to get Helen and Craig elected to the council. I worked hard in the Republican Party to make it a better party. There's a line from Chronicles of Narnia that I've always loved. I know the difference, you know, Trump could say, I know the difference between taking advice and giving orders. On a city council, each of the four of us will give our advice and then we'll vote. And in my opinion, the vote of the council becomes the orders that we, the council members, now have to execute. And I will be working with my other three colleagues on the council and our mayor to execute the will of the council, not whatever I might think is the best. If I fail in persuading people on the council with me to do what I think is the right way to go, then that's on me. But if I undercut the council, then that's really on me and I will never do that. I will help our other three members and our mayor work together to make Eagle even greater than it is today. And I still believe it is the finest city in Idaho and in this country. And I'm proud to be a Eagle resident and I look forward to serving all of you on the Eagle City Council.
Ms. Davis, your closing statement?
Okay, back to my script. Sorry. Critics have said I am not ready to represent Eagle residents and they're right. I'm not a politician, not a career politician, but that's exactly why I'm running. I don't bring political baggage, alliances, or hidden agendas. What I do bring is a fresh perspective, a willingness to learn, and the determination to work hard for this community. Too often, exposure to power breeds complacency, or worse, entitlement. I believe public service should always mean serving the public. I'll never hide behind my position. I'll always be honest, sometimes to a fault, and if I don't know something, I'll tell you, but I'll also find the answer. Professionally, I'm skilled at working within legal statutes and interpreting complex financial statements. I'm a tax accountant. And translating that information into clear, straightforward language. That's something our city needs, transparent communication about where our money goes and why. Fiscal responsibility isn't just about numbers. It's about trust. When residents understand the why behind budget decisions, it builds confidence in local government and strengthens our community. At the end of the day, this election isn't about experience versus inexperience. It's about balance, what I've been saying the whole time, working together. I encourage voters to use both of their votes wisely. Support one candidate with deep experience and one with new energy and fresh ideas, someone like me. I'm running because I care deeply about Eagle, about preserving what makes it special while ensuring it thrives for generations to come. I'll bring honesty, accountability, and heart to every decision I make. Thank you for being here tonight, for caring about our community, and for giving me the chance to earn your trust. I'm Danielle Davis and I'd be honored to serve as your next Eagle City Council member. Thank you.
Mr. Bender, your closing statement?
I'm unpolished, I'm a what you see is what you get person. I retired unexpectedly. I was injured. I was injured in the line of duty, and I landed here with full intention to staying retired, and it didn't last long. I got involved with Idaho Tough on Crime with Code Three to One, and I started working at the legislature here at the Capitol, and I started authoring bills, I started testifying for bills, I started supporting them in front of the House and Senate committees. I was looking for support from senators, from state representatives, from law enforcement leaders, and I got involved in public service right away. In addition to that, I was on the board, I am currently on the board of Crime Stoppers of Idaho, and I'm a peer support member for Courageous Survival, which helps veterans and first responders who are in crisis. So my public service has continued even in retirement. I'm not really retired, but I haven't made a single penny in the last three years plus working at the Capitol. I've done it volunteer and for free. So I'm not doing this for the money, I'm not doing it for the power, the notoriety, I'm doing it because it's calling a public service. I've had it my whole life. I could stay retired, but I choose to go back to work. And the city council has two vacancies. It seemed like a no-brainer to put all the effort I'm putting in at the Capitol, why not put it in in my own city? I care about this place, I love it. My family's here, they've been following me on the campaign trail, my wife's here, my mom's here, my daughter's here, I have two other kids that are here. Everybody works and lives here in Eagle, and we have a lot of friends and family here, so that's why I'm running. That's what you're going to get from me is honesty, integrity, character, and a moral compass where I can't be compromised, I cannot be. I worked in public corruption in my career, and I have zero tolerance for it. So what you see is what you get with me. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Merrill, your word of closing statement?
Thank you. I look back on the years that I've served the city of Eagle, and I look back and I think, how did I get there? I went to city council to complain about an annexation, the annex, our farm, and we had five hundred thousand chickens in the middle of Eagle, and I couldn't understand why they thought that we would, what advantage that would be. And that's the way I began. I had no aspirations, I had no knowledge, and I had no experience, but I was asked to serve on a committee. I started in nineteen ninety-five, and from there, I was asked to serve on a planning zoning. When I served on that, I thought, I cannot do that. But I did, I learned as I went, and then pretty soon, I was asked to run for city council, and I thought, I don't want to do that. That is where they make all the decisions and the legislative bodies, and that's where people get mad at me. I don't think I want to do that, but I did, and I started working with the city of Eagle until two thousand eight, when I was able to finish up as mayor. During those period of times, those years between two thousand two and two thousand and eight were some of the best years of my life. I love Eagle. We're a five-generation family that's lived there, my roots are deep. I'm born and raised Idaho Spud, and I'm dedicated to Eagle. My passion is high. I love looking back and saying, we created a city, this is like giving birth, and we did it. And we now, it's to the point, we've got teenagers, we've got to take care of them and run them and make sure that it runs right. I am your hometown girl, and I am humbly asking for your support for the Eagle City Council. Together, we can preserve the community we love while preparing wisely for our future. Thank you.
Shall we give the panel some applause? I just want to thank the Eagle County...